I can't see.
These guys are giving us the go-ahead. They want us to start.
Okay, well, the problem is, is I still don't have an agenda. But I will go from there. Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, good job.
Hello. Yes, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica for January 13th, 2014. Happy New Year, everyone. I want to start with roll call.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Present.
Mayor Protam Irvin.
Here.
Mayor Nyheart.
Present. And Councilmember Stone, lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And is there a closed session report? No reportable action. That brings us to the consent calendar. Okay. It's kind of far out there. Councilmember Stone.
I move approval.
And Mayor Protam.
A second.
Did you have a comment, Council?
A little comment, question, or remove it from the agenda is, I have a question is, if we're doing it for, I have no problem doing it with the two school board trustees, but why not the president of the water board also?
I didn't think about it. But if you would like me to, we can add that. Next time, I'm happy to do that.
Can we just add it to this?
We typically don't do this at all, so this is new for me.
Yeah, I knew it's new.
Universal. That's very good.
Yeah, I just think.
Fine. I think it's a good idea to.
Okay.
All right. So with that said, please vote. And that passes five to zero. And that brings us to special presentations. And we have the Pacifica Poet Laureate, Cindy Abbott's coming up.
Would be thrilled to know I am not a poet laureate.
It wouldn't surprise me, but you have many talents.
Good evening, everyone. I am Cindy Abbott, and I'm currently Chair Protam of the Pacifica Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, and I was also a member of the poet laureate selection committee. And I'm really pleased to be here at the first Pacifica City Council meeting in 2014, and in a moment to be presenting our new poet laureate to you. Now, Pacifica is well-known for its rich natural history and beauty, and we also have a really strong arts heritage. And with that, back in 2003, Pacifica was one of the first cities in San Mateo County to elect a poet laureate. And as of last year in May of 2013, the council requested that the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission put together a process to create the next, whoops, we've got a little difficulty there.
Is it not on?
Is the mute switch on? I have three minutes in front of me.
It says on up here.
Oh, it's supposed to be off.
It's supposed to be off?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's probably why. There you go. You have time. This is a special presentation.
Okay. Well, we won't go back into that, but I am Cindy Abbott, Chair Protam of the Park Speeches Recreation Commission, and I'm here tonight to be talking about our new poet laureate. As we were talking about, we have a really rich history here, and Pacifica was actually the first city in San Mateo County to even appoint a poet laureate, and even today, there are only two poet laureates in the county, and as of last year, the county itself went ahead and nominated and selected a poet laureate. So we should be proud to be trendsetters and to really be putting literature in front of our people, recognizing how important it is to a community. So in May of last year, council directed the PBR Commission to put together a process to select the next poet laureate for the city. And in July of 2013, the commission met, and I was appointed along with Commissioners Jim Taber and Gwen Yuri to be the selection committee. We put together a process that went to the PBR Commission in August, and we were thrilled, by the way, with how quickly we moved along, because normally our processes and the things that we're charged with can take years before they come to fruition. So here we are in just a little bit over six months to be presenting you tonight with our new poet laureate. We did receive three applications from extremely qualified Pacifica residents, and two of them we interviewed, one withdrew prior to actually going through the interview process. And as the selection committee, we reached out to a number of different people in the community to create that selection committee. It was not just the PBR Commission, but we had representatives from the education and arts community that were part of that process, and we want to thank them for being part of that. We had a really fascinating evening, and I have to say, we were just wowed and really struggled with making a decision because we had people that were so qualified and such interesting folks here that live in our city. So the two candidates came down, and we asked them actually very challenging questions, including their thoughts about the political demeanor of Pacifica and how would you represent that in poetry? Talking about their roles and why they want to be the poet laureate. And with that, I'm very pleased here tonight to present to you our new poet laureate, Dorsetta Hale. Dorsetta has lived in Pacifica for over 20 years. She's had her essays and poetry published in the San Jose Mercury News, the San Mateo County Times, and the San Francisco Chronicle. She's also a guest columnist for the Pacifica Tribune. She's authored a book of essays, as well as a chapbook, for which she was awarded a grant from the Philanthropic Ventures Foundation. Dorsetta is also a Barnes and Noble Poetry Award winner, a Southern California Genealogy Society essay-writing contest winner, and was named Humor Writer of the Month by University of Dayton Irma Bombeck Writers Workshop. So obviously, eminently qualified to fill this role here for us in Pacifica. Something that was really important in addition to these qualifications of writing was a connection with the community, and Dorsetta brought that to us as well. When we were talking with her and her thoughts about Pacifica, she shared with us the first time she came to Pacifica, came over the hill, and as so many of us, was wowed by its natural beauty and the coastline. But not only that, after being here for a little bit and exploring more if she was going to come here and to live here with her family, she realized that it was really the people that made Pacifica such a special place, and she'll be sharing some of these thoughts with us in a moment. So she has served as a position on the Airport Noise Abatement Committee. She's been active when her children were growing up with the Pacific Manor, Sharp Park, Pacific Heights, Oceana, and Terranova Schools, so you know she's been around for a while since some of those schools have merged and changed over the years. And she's currently a volunteer with Cora, Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse. So I'm thrilled tonight to present to you Pacifica's new poet laureate, Dorsetta Hale.
And thank you, the City Council. Let's see. I'd like to thank the members of the subcommittee who elected me to this position, and thank you also for approving it. I came to Pacifica for the first time over 20 years ago, when I helped my sister move from San Francisco. I'd never heard of Pacifica. This was before the now common go-to place Pacifica is for newscasters to come to film the monster waves before a storm. Driving down Highway One and cresting over the hill was just incredibly inspiring to our family, and the gorgeous views just took our breath away. And then seeing all the Asian, Pacific Islander, Mexican-American, and African-American kids at the Samtrans bus stop just put us over the edge, and we decided we really wanted to live here. We raised four kids here, my husband and I, and they've gone through all the public school system. Two of them have chosen, had chosen to continue on their higher education to Ivy League schools on academic scholarships, which we're very proud of. Pacifica is a community of artists, scientists, activists, and really cool people. I was just recently released from the hospital, and my day nurse was from Lindemar, my night nurse has a cousin who lives around the corner from me, and my surgeon lives across the street from me.
Wow.
So I felt in wonderful, warm hands, and here I am today, a couple of days after just getting out of the hospital. I love this town, and I'm truly honored to represent it in any festival, any literary event, anything that comes our way. I would like to praise everything about Pacifica. And to sum up how much I love this town, I'd like to read you a poem that I wrote for my daughter on her way going off into the world. And it's titled "Honor Student." You are born, and I am more than a wife. Your little face mirrors the love of my life. You are nine months and walking on your own. Most often you hold my hand anyway to show that you're not too grown. You are two and run twice around the track, chasing down your father before I can call you back. You are three, the world is your playground. You question, laugh, and experiment. Even at three, you astound. You are four, reading bedtime stories to us. We are so proud, and you enjoy all the fuss. You are five, the school years begin. I hold back tears, sensing some kind of end. You are ten, too old for pigtails. You give up hugs and good-night kisses. The mushy stuff has gotten stale. You are thirteen, and you want your hair straight. Going natural was in my generation, an old subject you hate. You are sixteen, and forget both Mother's and Father's Day. Too busy with school and friends, making your own way. You are seventeen, soon I'll have to let you go. Off to the big leagues of Ivy. How I love watching you grow. You are eighteen, my hair has grown silver and thinner. Just remember, baby, where you came from, as you sit where they dressed for dinner. Thank you very much.
How beautiful.
Dorsetta, don't sit down. Don't sit down. Hang on. Come back. Come back. Part of this is standing there while we all talk to you.
Oh, okay.
You know, I have things to say, but former mayor and now councilmember again, Stone, during his term actually started this, so I'm going to start with him, and his light was on first, so.
Oh, cool.
That was such a pleasure. My son is four, and my daughter is two, and I just, the first part especially, when the five-year-old, you feel something beginning to end was kind of, started to get a little sentimental here, so that was beautiful.
Oh, cute.
And, you know, when we put this in motion last year, we were really hoping that somebody would step forward, and we know there's so many talented people here, and, you know, we knew that the committee would do a great job in selecting our new poet laureate to represent us and to chime in on important news of the year or maybe of the seasons. I'm sure the mayor will ask you maybe to perform something at some time during the year and when it's important.
I'd be glad to, happy to, more than happy to.
Great. That sounds wonderful. And I do want to thank the committee. I want to thank Director Perez as well for putting together a very good process, a process that, you know, was fair and that really reached out to try to get as many people to apply as possible, and that you, you know, from our first work, sounds like a wonderful choice. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Congratulations, and I'm very glad that the health community live right around you and your back.
Thank you very, I know, they were wonderful.
To be here, I don't know if you realize that you are the second one, but also your picture will be able to be on the staircase in the Hilton Library to inspire, right within reading level, to inspire everybody of every age that comes up the steps to realize that we do have a poet laureate and to start thinking about what it means and all that sort of thing. And I'd like to give Anna Booth credit for that because she really did advocate long and hard to have Rod's picture put there and made a tradition here going forward. So congratulations. We look forward to a lot of interaction.
Thank you. I am so happy to be following in Mr. Clark's footsteps. I mean, he was wonderful, very passionate poet. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill.
It's nice to see you in person, because I have to admit, you know, I kind of read the Tribune from cover to cover, you know, see how many votes I lost or maybe gained, whatever. But it was nice to read and to put a face with the columns, and we were naming all those schools. I was sitting there thinking, God, I close that one, I close that one.
I know. It was a long time ago.
Very good. We're still here. Mayor Protam.
Again, I'd just like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
I've enjoyed your columns and your articles for many, many years in the Tribune, so it's just wonderful to see you here. And I'd also like to send my appreciation to the PBR Commission, who have done a beautiful job selecting a poet laureate. It's just a wonderful addition, again, to our community, and I hope that you get to partake in many, many events with the schools, with the library, with special occasions that we have. It's just wonderful to have you and welcome, and again, thanks to everyone for being part of this.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I have to say, with your poem, I have a 17- and 19-year-old, so I could very much relate to the end part of it, and it almost brought me to tears. Letting them go is not always easy, huh?
Thank you very much.
So Dorsetta, I am going to ask you something, but first, I want to thank the committee. You put together an excellent process. Cindy Abbott, why does it not surprise me that you were the chair of this? Is that right? No?
Thank you.
Teamwork. All right. Well, you guys did a really awesome job, and you brought us Dorsetta. What could I say?
Oh.
That was a lovely poem, but I'm going to ask you to do something else for me publicly.
Hmm.
Going to ask you to think about a poem for Pacifica.
Okay.
And I want you, when you're ready, to let me know and come back, because not only do I want you to share it with us in public, but I would love it if we could do a proclamation, a formal, framable thing, so that we have you as our poet laureate in a very formal way.
Oh, wow. Homework. Okay.
Well, you know, before I became chief nurse, I am an educator to begin with, so, you know, what can I say?
I'll do it.
Dorsetta, I'll look for you and opportunities for you to share, and I am so thrilled. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
No Tribune. We should get a picture of her into the Tribune, but there's, you know, it's a big deal.
City manager.
With the PD, I'd be happy to take care of that.
You two seem to be coming quick with a camera.
Yeah, really. Okay, with that.
It might be nice with Cindy.
Folks, we have an agenda. Hello, everybody.
He has a camera.
I know. Let's come back to the agenda, though, right now. They'll get a picture. With that, we have no public hearings tonight, and I bring us to council communications. Councilmember Stone.
Great. Well, it's good to be back, good to see people that are regular attendees in the council and staff today. Didn't have any committee reports over the holiday. Just wanted to thank everyone in the community groups and others for the wonderful holiday parties that we had, and very, nice community-building, holiday-seasoned, and we have a busy schedule coming up. I know we have our goal study session coming up in a couple of weeks and other things, so it feels like we're ramping up. So I have nothing else to report this evening, but looking forward to a great 2014.
Wonderful. And Councilmember DeGruy.
Right. Had the privilege of attending the Little Brown Church, in the Little Brown Church, which is coming along famously well, and the Lions Club gave a check, and I think we were all ready to faint, for $200,000, because one of our residents passed away and gave them permission to give that money to a local nonprofit. So that's very exciting. The Pacifica Historical Society and all of our history really deserves that, and so it was a wonderful event to be there with them, and I encourage everybody to pass your emails to everybody you know to alert them to what's going on about history in our city. And again, thanks to the Lions Club. The County Heart Program, which we got into some years ago, has helped one of our local police officers to get a house. That's a wonderful program, and encouraging for those who may be struggling to get a house, and it's a very good program. We'll be hearing more about that in the community. The Pacific Skies residents, the City Council in the past set up a hearing, and I was able to attend for a brief amount of time. I did talk to a resident who said they felt that the judge was very human, so I'm encouraged by that. The results will not come in for a while. Those are always very tense moments, I'm sure. We do have a communication plan, which I believe is still on our website. I'd like to make sure that, that's very important, how we communicate with you. That's very important. So the city manager is putting together all the comments for a presentation for us to vote on in March, I believe. And as was mentioned by the former mayor, we have our goal setting, which is very important to you, and we would want to hear from you. That's an all-day event on January 25th, which is in the Police Department, I believe. Thank you.
And Councilmember O'Neill.
I attended the first meeting of the year. It's the Jefferson, that's Jefferson High School District, Pacifica School District, and the Water District is coming. And we actually had a couple ideas that we've actually, instead of meeting once a quarter, we actually moved it up to March 6th, because we found something that we might want to, a couple things, actually, that we might have more coordination, cooperation between the four entities. Also attended the Pacifica Library Foundation meeting on Saturday, then I went to the Little Brown Church and saw Sue and Mary Ann and Lynn, and then I heard, well, I saw Karen's husband, but I didn't see Karen.
She was there.
I figured she was. They usually come as a pair. But, so anyhow, that's about it. It was pretty slow because of the holidays.
Okay, and Karen Irvin, I mean, Mayor Protam.
All right.
Goodness, how informal.
I attended, along with the entire council, the Council of Cities Dinner in December, and I was honored to be selected as an alternate for the Domestic Violence Council, and I just wanted to thank council for their support very much, and also to congratulate Mary Ann Nyheart, who was selected to be chair of CCG. So that was a big honor as well for her. I attended the first meeting as a member of the CCG's Legislative Committee, and we discussed a bill, AB 418, and that bill also was on the consent agenda. It was introduced by Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, and it addresses financing strategies for storm water pollution control. So that's something that's very interesting to look at and we're strongly supportive of. I attended a legislative update provided also by Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, and he discussed many of the burning issues that are affecting Pacifica and the Bay Area, including affordable housing and redevelopment and the fallout from redevelopment, things like that. What we're going to do, for the first time in many, many, many years, as you all know, we're looking at a potential budget surplus, so they're considering things like a rainy day fund and exactly what they're going to do with those funds. And also importantly, Kevin Mullen will be discussing many of these things on Saturday at the Pacifica Democrats Club, so I encourage all of you to attend. He is very interesting, and he's been involved in many, many things, and I encourage you to attend. I was also very honored to be selected to be a member of the League of California Cities Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Policy Committee. This committee reviews both state and federal legislation as it relates to issues of transportation, funding, construction, public works, telecommunications, and other related areas. And next week, we're going to Sacramento for a convention for city council members and mayors, and I'll be attending a meeting there discussing many of these issues, and I'm really looking forward to being part of this very important committee. And then, other than that, I attended the Pacifica School Volunteers Meeting, and they're doing many, many important things, and I encourage any of you that are interested in volunteering at the schools or donating your time, energy, finances in any way, to look into the Pacifica School Volunteers. And that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you, congratulations to you. One of our goals has been to, and it was in our last goal study session, to become much more visible and involved in the county and regionally, and we've really accomplished that. Mike has been named a contestant management. Sue is in the emergency. We just are very involved, and Karen being elected by members from the Council of Cities is a real honor. And now, I've brought that honor to our very own Kathy O'Connell, because as chair, being elected chair of the Council of Cities, guess what? Your city clerk kind of gets to come along with you, so she's like head city clerk now, but she is fielding all the questions quite well, and she's thrilled that I've put together a schedule, so she actually knows what to say to people, and the template's out, and we'll be updating the website soon. So on that note, I want to invite the council. Our first meeting is actually going to be hosted this time by the county. It will be at the San Mateo County Historic Museum. Our own Don Horsley put it together with Chris Hunter, but our keynote is, in fact, the state of the county from the new board president, David Pine, and so that's on the 24th, and I hope you all will join us. No, we're back from Sacramento. So what time is that? It's only in the morning. We're in Sacramento.
6:00 PM.
Yeah, 6:00 PM. We have no problem getting back in time for that. The other thing I wanted to point out to you is that Councilmember DeGruy and myself attended a meeting that Congresswoman Jackie Speer puts on periodically for council members, and this time, she really talked about a lot of issues, but she was talking about the latest issue that she's gotten her teeth into, and Councilmember DeGruy had gone to meetings about, and that's sea level rise in the bay. And as a result of that, our second meeting of Council of Cities will be focusing on some of the impact on our own economy in terms of sea level rise in the bay. It's not just in the bay, obviously, but there's a lot of concern because of all the industry that rings the bay. So, and she asked that a task force be put together, and one of the council members took that on, so when we're in Belmont, we will be talking about that. I will be attending ABAG exec meeting tomorrow night, and I know you said CCG, that I'm chair. I'm really not chair of CCG yet. I'm vice chair, acting as chair, so that vote's much later, so that's coming up.
Sorry.
But we didn't have a meeting of the City and County Association of Governments this month, partly because there's just a lot going on, but ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, will be meeting Thursday night, and if you guys have not seen, did every council member get a copy of this? No?
No.
The One Bay Area Plan?
I received one, but it might be because I'm the alternate. I don't know.
You are the alternate, so I think you probably did get one. I want to get one for you, so that you have a sense of what goes into this, because the One Bay Area planning process is starting again with the goal of the final product coming out in 2017, and this product for a One Bay Area Plan was so controversial. I mean, I have to tell you, my first ABAG meeting was literally with demonstrations and posters that went on until 2:00 in the morning. It was wild. It was like, I couldn't believe it. But I want to make sure that the lacking piece of this, which is any coastal issues, is addressed. Some of the smaller counties have issues very much like that, but the whole thing really centers around, surprising, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Oakland, when in fact, there's a lot more, and it affects how we receive our transportation dollars from the state. So that's why it's so important for us to be involved in the process. And I want to tell the council publicly that I've already been in touch with Mayor Mueller, John Mueller, in Half Moon Bay. He had talked to me about this before. We're going to put together kind of a coastal meeting, probably include Midcoast and Supervisor Horsley, so that we can talk about. Horsley, so that we can talk about what it is that the communities on the coast would like to make sure gets addressed in the next plan. And since they're beginning with getting input right now, it's the perfect time to get that process going. So I just wanted to share that with the council and make sure that we get copies for all of you, so that you have a sense of what's in this. If you didn't know, there's also, they put out at the same time, the projections and the growth projections. And the growth projections have really come down quite a bit. They're much more modest, largely because we don't have the same space. But the infill development is really where the focus is. So I wanted to share that with council and make sure that you are aware. And then, I do want to take a moment just to congratulate the Pacifica Historical Society, to thank the Lions. I know that Councilwoman Degree was there from the beginning with the ideas around, you know, saving the Little Brown Church, and when saving the Little Brown Church ended up on a ballot, and as a ballot measure, I was one of those save the Little Brown Church people, very interested in that whole process. But the way this community has come behind this project with donation after donation, and the way the Historical Society members have worked, and I know that there have been many people involved, but Shirley Gibbs has been such a spearhead in bake sales and rummage sales, I don't know how many different ways. It's been a group effort, and it's been many, but I want to thank them and congratulate them, and I look forward to the first day that that's actually open. And the last thing I wanted to say is about the county park. I understand that Devil Slide is totally on track for the county park for March, so they've started, since it is a county park, we don't have the same kind of involvement as we had with the tunnel, but they will be talking to us about what they want to do with some kind of, you know, opening ceremonies and that sort of thing. So we probably won't be doing a ribbon cutting, but we will have some involvement in that. And, oops, there is one more thing. The shuttle's on the chopping block before we even get it hooked up to the park. So I want to make sure I got a whole roomful of people on Saturday to say yes, they would all ride twice between now and March. I'm asking you, the public, anybody. What the shuttle was intended for was to ultimately link our parking lots and our business area with the park, so that we were able to capture those people who could stay in town and go up there, because the parking lot on our end is very small, and the fear was that people would pass through. And so we want to make sure that we try, we're trying to get them to look at the numbers between March and June, when the contract expires, but we had the match from Recology at the time to get the funds, so we got the funding, but there aren't enough people riding it, as we feared would happen, because the public just doesn't pick up shuttles unless they're really engaged in a reason to go somewhere. The park is that, but if any ridership increase, I would love, because I would like to keep it for what it's worth. And I promise to ride it four times at least between now and March. Okay. Anything else? Great. Moving from council communications, I'm going to go to oral communications, and I have several cards. The first card is Claudia Reinhardt, followed by Todd Slessinger, followed by Deborah Mallon, if you guys could kind of be prepared to come up.
My name's Claudia Reinhardt. I volunteer with the Pacifica Beach Coalition, and I just wanted to invite the council members, the city employees, and all the members of the public to our big event this coming Saturday, Saturday, January 18th. It starts at 9:00 AM. It's in honor of Martin Luther King's Day of Service, and we're going to do, we're going to clean up Pacifica's Lindemar Beach from 9:00 to 10:00. And from 10:00 to 12:00, we're going to do beach restoration, plant the dune plants for the animals that live there, like the snowy plover. The snowy plover is our dedicated honoree this year for Earth Day, so we're going to do a lot of snowy plover education. So that's this Saturday. It's a fun day. It's a lot of work, but it's also a lot of fun, and it's going to be a sunny day because we're having a drought, unfortunately. And then, calendar, also, we're having our Earth Day celebration on Saturday, April 26th, 9:00 AM. We'll be at all the beaches in Pacifica. We'll be cleaning the creeks. We'll be cleaning the playgrounds, the streets, schools. We'll be doing restoration plant work in addition to all the cleaning. And then afterwards, we have a big party at the Lindemar Beach area, parking lot area. So we hope you will participate in that, and our website is www.pacificabeachcoalition.org. And I hope you all join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Slessinger, followed by Deborah Mallon, followed by John Nardello.
Good evening, Todd Slessinger, Lindemar. Hey, a big Happy New Year and a shout out to all my fans and family and friends. I'm feeling my oats this year. Oh, and by the way, she already left, but a shout out to the poet laureate. But I want to express my deep disappointment that I wasn't named the poet laureate. I mean, I'm just going to give you a little ditty here. Roses are red, violets are blue. Got to wonder why the city of Pacifica didn't name me a poet laureate too. Ah, that was good. No, come on. Serious stuff. Well, sort of semi. It's the beginning of the year. You guys haven't done anything to screw up for me to correct yet, but it'll happen. So let's do, here's a change of pace. Let's do something big. Let's do something fantastic in Pacifica. You know, I mean, come on. Let's stick our necks out a little bit. Let's take a little risk. Let's take a little chance. You know, nothing gets done unless you take a chance. You know, let's just not plod along. Let's do something magnificent. Let's get people to take a look at us and listen, okay? Remember, there's no such thing as bad publicity. Do you ever see Pacifica in the papers? Ah, once in a while, when houses fall into the ocean, that kind of stuff. But come on, people. You know, did you really get elected just so you could get re-elected? Take a chance. You know, swing the bat. Like my best friend said in the East Bay, "If you don't swing the bat, you can't get a hit." Finally, something for the police, a little observation from Mr. Slessinger, because I don't miss much. You got to wonder in this country why the jails are so full, and why a guy two weeks ago in Illinois or Indiana left a minimum security jail, but it was so friggin' cold he went back. Well, I can answer that. I can guarantee you, if you were ever incarcerated in Afghanistan or a third world country and you managed to escape, I don't care if a pack of rabid dogs was chasing your ass, you wouldn't go back to that jail. So think about it, people. The penal system isn't penalizing anyone but us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deborah Mallon, John Nardello, and, oh, no, Cindy, you have a number on here. Never mind.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Mallon. I'm one of the mobile homeowners fighting the $1119 a month rent increase in Pacifica Skies Estates. I'm here tonight because I believe someone within Pacifica City Government threw us under the bus. On October 16th, I received a notice from Pacifica's Planning Department that they had accepted the park's application for a rent increase on 15 homes. I and my neighbor went to speak to the acting city manager, who referred us to the Planning Department, where we were able to review the eight-inch-high application and get copies of some of the documents. We were advised to call weekly for updates and to write letters or emails that would be included in the application packet for the hearing officer to review. Please remember this point. On October 23rd, we hired an attorney to write a letter on our behalf. The attorney emailed a 10-page PDF file to the Planning Department stating reasons the increase should be denied and the application dismissed. From October 21 to November 13, I called or emailed for weekly updates. I learned that letters, emails, and phone calls had been received from over half of the people affected, and that the park was getting copies of everything submitted as its public information. On December 13, Jeff Hyman and Shirley Gibson, through the San Mateo Legal Aid Society, take on our case. Thank goodness, because with hindsight, we would have been like lambs to the slaughter without them. On December 23, I received a copy of the park attorney's opening brief. The park is now requesting us to pay $78,000 in legal, accounting, and consulting fees. The hearing begins on January 6th as scheduled. On January 7, our attorneys were prepared to discuss service reductions. The park's attorney objects as he claims there's been no notice of service reductions given. Our attorney's state letters were written and homeowners, sent by homeowners, and sent to the Planning Department. This is where I learned that none of our correspondence was included in the packet the judge received. We will never know what the judge's ruling would have been if he had been allowed to review the attorney's letter or our testimonials regarding the history of the park, the financial burden this increase would place on individuals, the deterioration of the park's service reductions, as well as loss of amenities. The park somehow knew these items hadn't been sent to the judge. Someone with influence in Pacifica's city government structure made a decision that our input had no value. Someone decided these documents weren't important, that we were not important. Again, someone threw us under the bus. We were engaged in what we considered a high-stake poker game, and we found out that we had no cards in our hand. I thought one of city government's duties was to protect its citizens.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's all right. Thank you.
Okay. And John Nardello.
I'm with the group that's going to get this major rent increase also, and I'll make it as brief as possible, but I was stunned to find out that the hearing officer, who was a retired judge, didn't get my personal letter on how it affects me, or any of the others that we sent in, and the brief from the attorney that we scraped enough money to get a brief sent to this hearing officer. What kind of planning commission that looks you in the eye and tells you that I will submit personal letters to the hearing officer for you, and on how massive the rent increase will affect me personally, and then instead makes copies for the corporate investors and owners of the park that we're dealing with, that's trying to yank my house out from under me? Being a war veteran, this is like giving war plans to the enemy of the other side, which would be treason. This act does not just sabotage in our case, but I find it, in fact, criminal, and it tells me that the agency seems to be tainted or impossibly corrupt that we depended on to help us. I hope I'm wrong. That's all I'm just saying.
Okay. We're following up, I assume. Okay. Michelle?
Please do.
Okay. Those are pretty strong allegations. I'd like to see us follow up. Okay. With that, brings us to item number nine, and that is appointment to the San Mateo County Mosquito Vector Control District. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, the city has recruited candidates to fill the vacancy created by the incumbent's expired term of December 31, 2013, for the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. The city clerk received a total of five applications, and interviews were conducted by council on January 8. The list of applicants is included as attachment one. The term of office for a member of the Board of Trustees shall be for a period of two or four years at the discretion of the City Council. A two-year term would be January 1, 2014, to December 31, 2015, and the four-year term, January 1, 2014, to December 31, 2017. The council is asked to set the term of service at this time, as well as making the appointment.
What is the term typically? Say that again. I'd...
It is a two...
I'm not in the system where I can scroll between.
It is a two- or a four-year term.
That's what I thought.
Right.
Okay. I wanted to add just one thing to that staff report for the record, just so people are clear, that we did ask consistent questions of each of the candidates, that we asked about their knowledge, their role, three characteristics that they had that were compelling, what their experience had been with being representatives in the public, and what their role had been in the past, and how they faced challenges. And last but not least, if appointed, what their relationship would be to the City Council. Each of the candidates agreed to do a presentation for us at least once a year or at our request. And I would certainly request that, and since they agree, that will be an expectation. We don't have the form up here that was in your packets, so we would have done that form in the past, but I'm open to the pleasure of the council.
Do we have public comment before we...
Do we have... Oh, no. I didn't get any cards on this item. Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody have any public comment? Okay, see none. I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Stone?
I just, I want to thank all the applicants, and we were all, were all of us there? Or Sue might not have been there, but...
Who wasn't there, yeah.
We had good interviews, and I would, I don't know how you'd like to ask for votes, but I would just move that we approve, or that we appoint Pete DeJarnet for a two-year term.
Do, okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Degree was up here. Did you want to say something?
Actually, because I wasn't here, I'm abstaining, although it sounds like a great proposal to me.
All right. But you're abstaining. Okay. That's good. Mayor Pro Tem?
I could second that.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone?
I just want to clarify, are we also discussing whether it's going to be a two-year or four-year?
He made that in the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Sorry.
Two-year term.
Two-year term.
I just want to underscore that former councilmember DeJarnet did an excellent interview and clearly knows the role and the involvement and those sorts of things. I do want to encourage all of the members that they presented, that presented to engage. In fact, some asked about other committees, and I want to say how much I've been thrilled about the numbers of people that have stepped up for all of the committees and commissions and appointments. We just have had a plethora of new sort of blood coming forward, and that's always exciting for city government. So I want to thank everybody that applied, and I would ask for the vote. And that passes four with one abstention. Thank you. And our next item is City Council Liaison Committee Assignments for 2014. Staff report, please.
Mayor, councilmembers, each year, the City Council determines which of its members will represent the city in relation to a variety of boards, committees, and commissions. In some cases, the assigned council member is a voting member of the body, in others, they serve as a liaison between the designated group and the city. In all cases, the council member acts on behalf of the full council and represents the majority viewpoint on matters that directly affect the city of Pacifica. Council members serving as representatives to these groups report back on activities during regularly scheduled council meetings. The assignments are typically updated in January of each year to reflect changes associated with the council reorganization conducted in the previous December. The list of assignments for 2013 is provided as an attachment. Council is asked to determine the assignments for the year 2014.
Okay. Now, typically, we... Now typically, we do this just up here going kind of item by item. I wanted to be clear before we start that there are some things missing and there's some errors on here, and so as we go through them, I'd suggest we correct them. But I do have a card on this item. So Cindy Abbott, would you like to speak to this item before we deliberate?
Yes, please. Thank you. I'm now here in front of you as a board member, an advisory board member of the Pacifica Resource Center, and the Resource Center is one of eight agencies here in the county of San Mateo that is specifically focused on serving our residents and providing safety net services. And as such, in that valuable role that we play as the Resource Center in looking at opportunities for housing, food assistance, and economic self-sufficiency, we would like to ask, and we know that you have a lot of different committees and commissions and obligations here as part of the council, but we would be thrilled if the Resource Center could have a city council liaison added to the list. Thank you for considering that.
Thank you. It must be great minds, because I was going to make a suggestion that any of the agencies that receive money from us in any way, shape, or form should have a liaison. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I would certainly like to make that part of it.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's an incredibly important organization, a nonprofit, and the city that we do give money to, and I think it plays a very vital role in our community, and I think there should be a liaison definitely to the Resource Center.
Right. Any other thoughts? Do we need a motion on that? Can we add that as part of this committees and commissions? I'm going to turn to the city attorney.
You can just make that part of the motion.
So as we go through this, we'll ultimately get all the assignments done and then we'll make one motion?
Yes.
So we would be adding the Pacifica Resource Center. I think, isn't PCT on here? They used to be.
Yeah, they are.
Okay. And the chamber?
That's what I was going to say.
There is no chamber.
Yeah.
There used to be that, too.
On the list.
There should be. At least for the visitor center. Is there any other intergovernmental agency that we...
The youth committee at one time was on here and it hasn't been.
Well, one that isn't on here is the Beautification Advisory Committee, and so we'll be adding that. And then there are some things on here that shouldn't be, like Legislative Committee is the Legislative for CCG Committee, and that was never Councilmember Stone because that gets appointed by CCG, and he's on BPAC, didn't apply for that. I've always been the ledge person, but now Councilmember Irvin, because I'm on it automatically as vice chair. Yes?
I'm just wondering, do we want to consider, I know also some of the commissions don't have a liaison, for instance, PBNR Commission or the Planning Commission, are we interested at all in having any kind of representative on some of those commissions as well?
Well, Planning Commission, and I usually name the planning commissioners, we have certainly a planning commissioner in the audience by the name of Chuck Evans, who's out there, and we have Cindy Abbott, who has been to the podium a couple times now as our commissioner from PBNR. So we're grateful that they come, but my thinking about commissions is they tend to appoint somebody for who can come to that meeting, but they have somebody here. Do you want somebody that goes to every one of their meetings?
I think the issue is, if I may...
Yes.
We don't hear anything. So some kind of setup where we would get a report or...
Okay. Now, we are going to have our joint meetings coming up, just so you all are reminded. In fact, we've started with the process of setting up the first ones. Councilmember Stone?
I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah, I was just going to mention because we worked on the committees and commissions and after our study session with that and approval of that part of what we discussed was having our annual meetings so that we not only get on the same page after goal study session, but then also have an annual report from the following year, so that...
I was just going to point that out, that each is going to come to us with an annual report also. So we have that slated to start on a cycle. My only hesitancy about committees and commissions, and I'll go to Councilmember O'Neal, is the issue of decision-making and that we're the point of appeal for them, so that if we're already wedded to having a liaison with the commissioners, what does that do? Because that doesn't happen with the committees. They aren't decision-making. They make recommendations to council. It's nice for somebody on council to be there to having heard the process, but the public meetings that the commissions have, they make decisions that are appealable. So it's kind of a little bit different, and when you, even if you come to a planning commission, for example, you have to be very quiet and very non, no facial expressions, no nothing. It's a harder, it's a harder format to be in. Am I correct, city attorney?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So Councilmember O'Neal?
Ms. Mayor, do you mind if I just finish my thought there?
Oh, okay. I didn't know I interrupted.
Thank you. So I just wanted to make a comment on the chamber liaison before that gets too far away. There'd been a chamber liaison in the past before. I would just, I wouldn't want to declare that we have a chamber liaison without having a discussion with the chamber and see how they feel about it, but I would definitely be open to putting it out there to the chamber to re-explore having a liaison, but I wouldn't feel comfortable just declaring that we have a chamber liaison.
Okay. Councilmember O'Neal?
I was just kind of talking because I do have concerns about us having a liaison with the commissions, because you would have every Monday night booked. I mean, okay, and I think it's unfair to ask them to have every Monday night booked as well as I personally don't want to be here every Monday night in this room, you know? And also on Wednesday, which is their night of their study session, we sometimes have our study sessions, and then there's also other meetings we're going to, so I would not be in favor at all of having a liaison to planning PBNR or whatever.
Yeah. Councilmember DeGree?
I think if we use the study sessions and the reporting, that would help a big deal. A little information on the chamber, looked into this a couple of years ago, the chamber chooses who they send to the council, not the other way around. So unless they've had a meeting to change that policy, that's the way it was.
Okay.
Can I just add to that, just the...
Well, Mayor Protem was next, but...
It's okay.
We're learning our roles again here.
Sorry. I just have a brief comment. I appreciate the feedback. I think that's really great points that people made. I just wanted to find some level of consistency, and I agree, there's a difference between commissions and committees, and I think we go for it with the...
Yeah, I think the legal concerns about the commissions make it kind of a moot point. On the other hand, the only reason I mentioned the chamber is because the logical thing in the PBNR, it's those intergovernmental agencies that we give money to, and I was just treating them all the same, but certainly we can ask. I mean, I'm okay with that and reporting, you know, how you want to proceed. Councilmember Stone?
Sure, just for clarification on Councilmember DeGree's point, when I was on the board for a few years, Councilmember Lancel served as the council liaison and went to every meeting and all of that every month. So I think they do send somebody for different things, but there has been a council representative in the past, and I don't think it's a bad idea, just the way we go about it is important. I don't know how everyone feels about this, but I'm going to take a long shot here and just say I would go ahead and approve the list as it is right now, if anyone would like to make any changes.
Oh, no.
All right.
I don't know how to break it to you, but I'm uploading tonight.
It's 7:59, but I'd love to do that. All right. And that's fine, I'll withdraw, but I thought I would, at least in the interest of life, to try that. So let's proceed and maybe we can get it going here.
That was a nice cry, and it may go very quickly once I get to it, but yeah, okay. Councilmember O'Neal?
I actually think that if we actually do follow through on a biannual meeting with each of the commissions, and I think like with open space advisory, I think that's, I mean, these are all adults that I hopefully can bring some input and consideration to it. So I think a biannual meeting with the full council to kind of give them what our thoughts are is far more appropriate than a liaison. If you have a liaison, it's one council member's thoughts versus all five.
Who, a commission you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're pretty active. We don't vote on committees, but we're pretty active in committees. Okay. Then it sounds like we've got the additions, we've got, and we'll figure the chamber out, but the only thing we give to the chamber is the visitor center. So it's a little different than being on the board for the chamber, in my mind. We just, it's the visitor centerpiece, and I don't know how we want to handle that, but we'll go from there. So with that said, obviously, the council of cities changes because the city selection is by ordinance, what is it called at the county level? County names the city selection committee, and so they've named the mayor, so that changes to the mayor. North County Council of Cities has never, hasn't met in my entire time up here. I don't think they exist anymore. Sue, do you know?
I'm not sure if they officially stopped. There's a lot of conflicts because of the other one, but...
Yeah, I don't...
But we should check on it because instead of meeting once a month, it may be like twice a year. I just don't remember.
Well, there's some discussion among the mayors to have a summit with all the councils together from the north cities, so we can leave that alone, but I know of no committee to that effect. The A-BAG delegate, is there? Yes. Councilmember O'Neal?
I just wanted to ask, North County, what's that go down to, San Bruno and north? Or what are the cities?
I have no idea. I've never had this, I have never had this meet.
It went further than that.
And I was almost going to propose, I mean, obviously, we'd have to check and see with how from the A-Pescadero is, do we want a coastal county council of cities or something? If we're going to have issues with Highway 1, the one-plan area, that may be your idea of meeting with that, do we want to have a more formal setup?
At this point in time, that is, we aren't, we can't really do that for the other entities.
Well, I know, remember, I prefaced that with, we can ask them.
Well, okay, at this point in time, Mayor Mueller is the driving force, and I've been in contact with him, and I'll let you know as that goes forward, but the discussion point comes with mid-coast and how much they're involved, and are they county or are they really a city, and yada, yada, yada. And then you get lost in the mush. So I will let you know, and I certainly am going to be, all the council will be involved. I just haven't heard of a meeting yet. Okay? Council, Mayor Protem Irvin?
On the next one down, A-BAG, I know, Mike, you're currently the liaison, and we're just wondering how you felt about that. I would also be interested in being part of that.
I'm fine doing it. I mean, it's up to you. If you really want to do it, it's up to you.
Okay, if we could...
You could be the alternate if you'd like as well.
All right.
So I, you want, so am I the alternate?
If there's other anything else, just wanted to try to kind of add in a couple different things, and it is really interesting to me. I would love to be part of the process, but it, you know, you...
It's fine. If you want to do it, you can do it.
Okay, and I'll give up another one of my committee members.
And then I would be the alternate?
And then you're going to be the alternate? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This is just to the meeting that happens in the...
Twice a year.
It was January last year.
Well, and they gave it up in the fall, so for a different assembly, so it's really two years, two times.
Right, it's very minimal.
There's one coming up. It's in April usually.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay. With that said, Airport Community Roundtable?
Yep. I'm fine with it.
Anybody else? You're the alternate?
I'm fine with being alternate.
Okay. CCG, I would ask to continue only because, you know, vice chair. Okay. The Emergency Services Council of San Mateo?
Didn't you skip, so you and Len?
Skip CCG Legislative Committee.
Oh, the Legislative Committee cannot be appointed by us.
That's, I was...
That's why I skipped it. It's appointed by CCG.
Yeah, yeah, you mentioned it.
It's only on the list because it's a list, but it can't be appointed by us.
I get it.
So Karen's on it already anyway, and she was appointed by CCG. It would be the same as, I think, Mike, you're on congestion management? Yeah, and you're appointed by CCG, so.
Yeah.
Emergency Services Council, there we go. Sue?
Fine.
You've been doing it. You okay with that?
I'm fine unless anybody else...
Okay. Emergency Preparedness Commission, I got to tell you, when I got this list, this was news to me. So that's kind of shocking at the end of the year. Len?
I thought Councilmember DeGree was the liaison to that.
Well, and I thought you were at one point, so I'm like...
I was the year before, and then Councilmember DeGree was, I believe, last year.
We went back and forth on this one?
Yes, between the two of it, yeah.
Yes, remember that?
Right. But that's between, so I thought we were confused between Advanced Life Support and Emergency Services.
There were the three of them that were...
Oh, my. So who's...
I don't mind doing it.
Would you?
No, I don't mind.
Okay, because you kind of got the emergency stuff going on, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So Councilmember DeGree is going to do that? Does it need an alternate? Mike, you were it.
I didn't know I was the alternate.
You know, you and I were both surprised. Okay.
That's fine.
You know, I'm thinking, have you done SURE yet?
No, I've only done it through work. I haven't done it, so I'd love to.
Okay, there. Alternate, sounds like we just talked to it.
I like alternates.
Yeah, there you go.
I think that's a tough committee to have an alternate in, frankly, just because there's a lot of stuff going on. I remember when I first started the committee, it took like three months just to kind of get going into what was going on. So I do think it's difficult to have an alternate just for the sake of...
So it really has to be the person who is the person that's the liaison has to be there.
Well, the, to me, the committees that are important to have an alternate in are the ones that are going to have a vote potentially, where like of course, CCG or these other regional where you need somebody to vote in a certain way for you, but in something like Emergency Preparedness, they're not doing anything controversial, they're not doing anything like that, so...
They apparently survived without me, so.
You know, hey, they got by somehow.
It was a disaster.
They didn't know either.
Anyway, so that might be a useful way for us to streamline what we're doing.
Great.
I think that's a very valid point, so if Councilwoman DeGree wants it, we got it.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll just leave it at that. No alternate.
Am I the alternate or is Karen the alternate?
Oh, we're taking the alternate off.
Okay.
Just don't even worry about it. I think he has a valid point. And Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance?
I'm very happy to be there, but they do, because it's a quorum thing, they do want an alternate on paper.
Okay, so we haven't had one, so we need to name one?
We haven't.
Isn't that the thing I'm on with?
No.
Oh.
Congestion Management is for CCG.
Just commute.org.
It would have to be the alternate to...
Yes, Councilmember?
Is that a county-appointed committee? Or is that just one for everyone?
No, that's us. It's one for every city.
Okay.
Actually, the difference is you have considerable amount of money to give out, and they give in a lot of input into that money.
Oh, okay.
Among other things, and they solicit money.
So is it appropriate for me to be the alternate?
Sure.
If I'm on the...
That'd be good, that you can get into the congestion management. That'd be perfect.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Open Space and Parkland Advisory Meeting, that's, I think you were there when, that's why you missed the interviews with...
Yes.
Yeah, you were there. So they've had their first meeting. Good. And, yep, alternate?
I would continue as the alternate if that's okay with the council.
Perfect. All right. Pacifica Television?
I would really like to keep that.
Okay. And I am going to throw in there the Pacifica Resource Center, since we're into that. Anybody want to be that liaison?
Sure.
Karen?
I would be happy to.
Okay.
Karen, you're on the Board of Directors of Pacificans Care, which is the primary funder for the Pacifica Resource Center.
Ah, that's a very good point.
I would think you being on council, there, liaison, and on the board, that's kind of a conflict of interest in three seats.
It is.
That's fair.
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, that's why giving up those board positions is important.
But when do they meet?
I have no idea.
I just want to throw in, if Councilmember Irvin does want to, I wouldn't object to her doing it, just because they're not voting on anything, you know. The liaison position in that same way with the chamber is simply going to be to report back and to have, it's related to have a communication with the board. I don't think Councilmember Irvin or any of us would be dictating policy of the Resource Center Board, or vice versa. That's just my two cents. If she's passionate about that, I wouldn't want to begrudge her the opportunity.
I appreciate that. My thing about ethics is obviously appearance more than, so, I don't know. I, I think Mike brings up a valid point, which is kind of what I was going to bring up in a little bit, about two former school board members on liaison with the schools, so, yeah.
What does the attorney say?
What does the attorney say? Is she over there looking?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say that this isn't a formal incompatibility of office issue, which is what you may be concerned about. I think it really is a majority council policy preference that you're talking about. I don't know that it helps any, but I, I don't think there's an actual legal concern with the dual representation.
I'm a little bit torn. I, I do see why, you know, perception is reality. It is something that is so important to me, but I don't want people to think that I would be unfair in any way in, you know, allocation of funds or those kind of things. So if, anybody else?
Okay, is there somebody else that really wants to do it?
I'd be happy to do it, but again, I don't know when it is. Do you know, Cindy?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily be attending our board meetings, but again, if you were a liaison, it'd update the, you know, conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's probably less of an issue even for Councilmember Irvin, so which one?
I'm very, I'm, I'm very happy to do it if.
That's fine. Okay, all right.
I mean, that's fine with me. I'm not going to try to deny it, or I just.
Okay.
It's a good point.
Discussion.
Yeah.
It's a good point. Okay, with that said, let's move on. Oh, Councilmember Stone, did you have anything else to say?
No, thank you.
Okay. Life support, before I'm on it. Oh, the Joint Powers. Joint Powers, here we are.
I'm, I'm currently on it. I'm happy to remain on it.
Well, you're talking about life support. I'm above that at the North County Fire.
The Fire JPA.
North County Fire.
I'm good.
How are we doing on North County Fire? You want to stay?
Yeah, that's fine.
And Sue? Okay.
Are you an alternate, or you with me?
Yeah, it's, two people are always on it. Yeah, you're both voting members. That's how the JPAs organize. The San Mateo County JPA for Advanced Life Support, that's Karen, alternate Sue.
Fine. I'm fine.
Okay. The Joint Powers Authority for Library, Mike, you're on it currently.
I'm happy to keep that.
Okay. And Fog Fest Liaison, I've done it for 100 years. I'm, I'm, I've been on the Fog Fest, so all I do is work out little problems that happen because I know it. I don't have to attend every meeting, so that one, I don't have a problem hanging on. Do you want to?
I'd also like to continue if that's okay with the council.
That's perfect. Coma Creek Flood Control Advisory Committee?
I'm fine with that, but they do want an alternate.
Okay, they want an alternate?
Right, and, and the ones that want an alternate that I'm on, they want it to come from the city clerk's office.
So do we have to vote on that? Well, we're voting on it now.
Well, you wouldn't, I don't think that you'd need to vote on a.
We can vote on all of these together.
You would just have the city clerk to be the staff liaison to the council.
Somebody want to be on the Coma Creek Advisory?
It's an alternate, you don't.
As an alternate.
Can I just ask questions why we are on the Coma Creek Advisory?
There is a little piece of the creek going through Pacifica.
Oh, what is it under?
I don't remember where it is.
Is it under conduit or something?
Practically, yes.
Who would like to be the alternate?
I would love to be the alternate.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Thank you.
It's very fascinating.
Hart. Sue, you've been our representative to Hart for a while.
Right, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and anybody else want it? Okay, the Hope Board?
Right, it's like the, the executive board type of a thing.
Okay. So you're fine with both of those? Okay.
They meet right after each other.
Len, BPAC also is a C-CAG appointment, so we can't really alter that unless Len's giving it up. Economic Development, I'm preferring to bow out, even though I got involved in starting it. Len, did you have this on for a reason?
Probably at some point. I would continue with economic development.
Okay, does somebody else want to be on it?
I would like to be back on it.
Okay, nobody else then? Sue?
Yep.
Okay. Now, wait a minute. At one point, we have to count the committees because the involvement should be spread out here. The Articulation Committee. My only issue and only comment we've already talked about was the issue of having two former school board members on the Articulation Committee. Maybe it's fine. I just want to make sure that we talked about it publicly.
I'm fine giving it up if somebody else wants to take it on.
Councilmember Stone?
I don't think it's a negative. I think it's only a positive, and again, it's not something that is, this committee does not vote on policy, they don't vote on funds, simply an articulation or a, you know, place to discuss issues between the three or four entities. And if there is any movement from that, it comes back to all of our boards, so I don't see any conflict.
Okay. I just will share with the council, only one person, but then I've only had one dog feces letter, too, so, and that one seemed pretty impassioned. And you know, all of you.
What's that to do with this?
Well, because I had a letter about this and.
Articulation.
Board members. So I just was sharing it with you and wanted to make sure we brought it up and talked about it. That's all. And I could see why the person was. I was just commenting that that was a pretty incensed letter. So I'm fine if that's where you want to go. Everybody? Okay. Pacifica School Volunteers?
I'm great with men.
Okay. The Library Foundation Subcommittee?
Great.
Yes?
I'd like to continue.
Okay, perfect. Both of the next two have folded for obvious reasons, their tasks are done. Fireworks Task Force is not done, though, right? It has continuing work.
And maybe Cindy was on there with me, is, we, we're kind of like half done, but we did talk about coming back to evaluate last year. So I think we kind of voted that we wanted to come back this year, right, Cindy? To kind of evaluate last year?
I do remember that. We had that at council, actually.
Cindy was there.
Yeah.
Right, okay, yeah, so I'll just stay on that.
I'm totally fine with that. Are you? Okay. But along those same lines, the Climate Action Plan is going to come back also.
Second, I have to comment.
Oh, the Chief of Police wants to make a comment. Can we take comments from the audience?
Oh, I forgot he was back there, it's too dark.
Not the audience, he's staff.
He's staff.
I just wanted to make you aware that when the fireworks task force committee was put together, there was a sunset date put in place, which that committee is actually sunsetted already.
That's true.
Ah, there you go.
That's true.
So that kind of goes off and gets reappointed, so.
Has to come back to the council.
Eliminate that one, needs to come back to the council. Very good. Okay.
Mayor, you wanted to add the Beautification Advisory Committee?
I did, and I would like some, I don't mind staying on, but I think it needs a second person to give it some life. I don't mind to help with the transition, but I certainly, I mean, it has life. This is an energized group of people. So Councilmember Stone?
I was just going to comment about the fireworks task force that we did ask staff to bring it back to us, so if that takes a revamping of the, of the committee charter, then we might have to do that. But we did ask for it to come back to us.
I, I agree, I remember that as well.
I think it did come back to us, like a report from the committee, but I don't think the council ever got anything back as a report of the success or failure of the, of the issues from this July. I think that's right, correct, yeah.
And so, okay, so we're eliminating that, and then you guys will bring it back, and we'll make a liaison at that point?
Correct.
Okay. And Councilmember Irvin?
Would love to be part of the Beautification Committee if nobody else is interested, as an alternate or a co.
That'd be great, because they've got some things coming forward. So did we hit everything now? The only thing before we vote on this as a group, because I assume we need to vote on it as a group, that I want to say is that I would like to ask staff to put a link or the list or something, because some cities have done it different ways, underneath each of our names for who's doing what, and include our county stuff, because that way the public knows who to get in touch with and who to contact. And I've seen it on a number of the city websites, and it's really kind of helpful, because then you know who to get a hold of. So I'd like that on ours. Okay, entertain a motion.
Well, you said you wanted to count to see if it was fairly distributed.
Oh, good point.
Yeah, I guess somebody over there, two people were writing, so I assume they need to give us the count.
Well, somebody, we can redo it.
Well, I'm going to have less, but I have more that's not on here, so.
That's kind of an important point, that there are other committees that aren't on here.
If everybody up here is fine with it, I'm okay with it. But it's a good, unless you want something.
I mean.
You were just reinstating.
I just, you know, if seven, some person has seven things, it's really not kind of fair to either them or us.
Councilmember Stone, while we're waiting, is Kathy?
I was just, as soon as she said everything, I think I was going to make a motion, because if, you know, we went through the list, everyone saw what they were taking on, and if there's a problem, I'm sure they can come back to council and go from there, or forever hold their peace right now. No, I'm just kidding, we'll bring it back, but.
We're married to these things.
The thing that's so striking about some of these things, like C-CAG Chair, you're on ledge, you're on finance, you're on exec, and there's something else. I mean, so there's like four.
And you have to travel, like a lot of the ones I have are right here.
Yeah, so there, there's a difference in some of those kind of things, so I kind of, I'm okay.
Right, and I think there's also a point, you know, this is my second year, and I just would like to be exposed to a variety of different things, you know, keeping, of course, my head above water and, and just being engaged and doing what I can in any committee I've committed to, but also learn as much, it's a learning process.
Well, if most people don't care, I mean, it's not a big deal for me either, so.
All right.
So if that's said, and we're all okay, do we have a motion? Are we relatively even, Kathy?
Relatively, Councilmember Degree probably has the most.
By?
Oh.
By?
Five. Most are three, because I'm not counting the alternate, just the, the point person. So I would say that Councilmember Degree has the most.
But it's on this list. You didn't count all the other stuff outside of this list.
Yeah, just on this list.
When some, like you said, some of the things meet twice a year, and some of them meet monthly, so it's, you know, it's, it's hard to really compare these.
Yeah, it is.
Like A-Bag, for instance, meets once or twice a year.
Right.
So. I'm okay with it, so.
Councilmember Degree, are you okay with it?
I'm fine.
Do you feel overburdened?
Uh-uh.
Well, there you go. Okay, with that said, Councilmember Stone?
I'll make a motion. How would you like me to say this? That it works? Okay, I'll approve that, or I'll make a motion that we approve the city liaison appointments as amended.
And Council, or Mayor Pro-Tim?
I second.
Great. Please vote. Okay.
I don't remember who the Coma Creek.
And that passes five to zero, and that was perfect. And that brings us to our last item, appointments to be considered by the City Selection Committee and by the San Mateo County Council of Cities Staff Report.
All right. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, the City of Pacifica is a member of the San Mateo County Council of Cities organization. At their January meeting, the Council of Cities will be selecting representatives to serve in the following seats. Selection of one council member to serve on the A-Bag, representing cities fulfilling Pedro Gonzalez's term through January, excuse me, through June 30th, 2015. Selection of one council member to serve on the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, or HART Board, representing cities and fulfilling Pam Frisella's term through February 28th, 2017. Selection of one council member to serve on the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, also HART Board, representing cities for a term of three years, beginning March 1st, 2014. Typically, the city council votes to support specific candidates for such seats, and then authorizes the mayor to act on its behalf and vote for the designated candidates. This year, the process is earlier than usual, and deadlines fall such that the specific candidates are not yet known. The deadline for the letters of interest from candidates is January 14th, 2014, with selection to occur at the January 24th meeting. The city council does not meet between these dates. The city council is asked to authorize the mayor to represent the council's interest in casting Pacifica's votes related to filling these seats without designating specific candidates. In addition, councils should, could choose to authorize the mayor to vote in this way automatically and without further specific council direction as a regular course of action related to future Council of Cities selection activities. Staff request council direction to either continue the standard practice or adopt this or adopt this new practice of delegating the selection authority to the mayor.
Councilmember Stone, and then I have something to say too.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question for staff. Do we have all of the letters, or are they still trickling in for A-BAG and HART and?
We've actually received two, one today and one last week, but they are still trickling in.
And there's one that just arrived. See, they come to us first. They don't come to the county or to the cities first.
So I just wanted to finish, just so, I did ask the, I did ask staff to put that, the staff report is one of my last things, is mayor. Because when I was mayor, it was difficult, as these trickled in past the council meeting and what have you, that, you know, to get and decide who was the best person to support. And it does take a while too, to kind of give some calls out to other mayors and other council members to try to get their support for these things. So that's why I'd ask that we discuss how we do this voting in the future, just so everyone knows how that originated.
That's great, and we can talk about that. I'm kind of glad you brought this up, because truthfully, it's not just every year. We have votes that come up throughout the year. When the city selection part of, and it's a San Mateo County Select, Selection Committee that's formed by the Board of Supervisors, is the mayor's. How each city chooses to do it is dependent on the city, but the mayor is the voting member, and anybody else that votes has a proxy, or has to have a proxy, and that comes out. So sometimes we can get the letters out and get the council's input, and sometimes we can't. When I was first on council, we didn't do that, and then we started doing it out of courtesy. And I certainly like it anytime we have the opportunity. But the last time we did HART candidates, I think they came from the nomination from the audience at the time. So I do know, I think there's going to be two or three A-BAG. We probably have two letters. I know I've certainly been talked to by two people so far, and I've heard a third, although I haven't seen the letters. But one is Dupka from South San Francisco, and then Wayne Lee from Milbury. Milbury?
Yeah, Wayne Lee's from Milbury.
Yeah. So, and both of them have put forward good cases. Wayne Lee was the alternate currently, but there might be a third, so how would you like to proceed?
No questions.
Any public comment? There isn't any public comment on this. No cards. Okay, Councilmember Stone?
With A-BAG, I'm, since Mayor Nyhart is the serving member of A-BAG, I would really defer to her judgment on that, because we only, I think, San Mateo County has, what, two city representatives? Yourself and then this person, and it's going to be very important for you to work together with them. That's a huge board, and so I would defer to whoever you would like to work with. And if, also if you wanted to wait to see if anyone else put their letters in, I would also like to extend that luxury to you as well. I think it would suit us and the county best.
Okay.
That's my two cents.
I don't think we have any letters for HART yet, right?
Actually, um-
Do we have one? I haven't heard from Becky yet, and I get an update.
From Liz Normandy, South San Francisco, which I believe came in today.
Okay, I didn't talk to Becky today, so.
Yeah, and that is for HART.
All right, Councilwoman DeGru?
Well, I have two comments I'd like to make. One, I like the opportunity for each council member of each city to weigh in. However, periodically, you do have these situations. I think that should be a case of maybe CCG, well, not CCG, Council of Cities working on that so that those types of things don't happen.
I can just answer. The problem is we won't have, we have to have the counties, we have to have Rebecca Romero. And without her, because she actually certifies the elections, she won't be here in February. She's-
Oh, no, not for this particular. I was answering-
In general, that usually happens differently.
So for a specific issue, certainly.
Yeah. In general, for the big elections, you're right. It usually happens differently.
And then, were those the two names for A-BAG that you mentioned, Wayne Lee and Gupta?
Those are the two, but I heard there was a third one that came in.
I haven't seen that.
Okay, not with you. I think it just was talked about, but I don't know.
My preference would be Gupta. He's been around longer, as far as I know.
Well, and that is where I'm leaning also, but I want to reserve that, depending on who else applies. Okay. Councilmember Stone?
I'll just make a motion that we authorize the mayor to vote for whoever they choose and vote at their discretion for these elections.
Okay.
Can I have clarification again? I'm sorry.
I have a motion. Do we want to second it and then discuss it?
I can.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to add that I do think-
Are you going to second it for discussion?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, thank you. Now you can discuss away.
Right.
Councilmember DeGru?
I just want to make sure, was, is this vote for this present situation, or is this?
Right.
All right, thank you. That's fine. That's all I wanted, clarification.
That true, the maker of the motion?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
I think this has been stated several times, but, you know, I think because of the fact that so many times we don't have all the information in front of us, and then it's really difficult for us to get back together to make that decision. To, I'd like to look at the big picture when we're exploring how to evaluate candidates and go forward with the vote. So I think the best way to do that is give the direction to the mayor to make that decision. So I'm supportive.
But this is just for this?
And it also says, in addition, council could choose to authorize the mayor to vote in this way automatically and without further specific council direction as a regular course of action.
Folks, I think we have a motion and a second, but I do want you to know, the mayor, whoever sits here, always has the ability to vote if we haven't voted.
Right.
So they will always, there isn't really much to vote on. If we haven't voted, if a motion comes up, they always have it, because that's how the city selection committee is set up. They will vote it, or they designate it. So it, we have at a courtesy, we'll every time try to be here so you guys all have input. Okay. Councilmember Stone?
Just wanted to clarify to Councilmember DeGru that the motion is simply for the three voting things that we have, the two HART positions and A-BAG. And then the second part of the council requested action, we can discuss after we vote on this.
Okay. So can we vote? Please vote. And that passes five to zero. And was there a second part you wanted to talk about, Councilmember Stone?
Sure, this is just the second part for going forward. And I mentioned briefly in my opening comments is that, just serving as mayor this last year, I would have thought it would have been a more advantageous to the city and to the county to get the best person there, and also leave it open for the mayor to be able to kind of rally together with other mayors from the county to have the voting be at the discretion of the mayor and not go to the council. Also too, it's, you know, probably four to six, seven times, depending on if there's people that resign during the year. This comes to the council, so it will also free up agenda space as well. So I think it kind of helps on all fronts, and we're rarely in disagreement as well. So that's why I would just move that we, in the future, direct the mayor to vote at their discretion for Council of Cities.
I would just remind everybody also that they frequently, especially close votes like this one might be, they frequently go to second and third vote, and the mayor, you're only given input into the first vote, because if we all have to stay with those, we never get anybody elected. Mayor Protem?
I second.
Okay. For, oh, sorry, thank you. Is that a motion?
I made a motion.
Oh, okay, and we have, then we have a motion to do it. That. Councilmember DeGru?
I actually don't agree, but I got to second, so.
Okay, can you tell me?
Well, I have two reasons. One, I think that a city's council persons may have a different perspective than mayor here, there, there, down the line. And secondly, that we can always give permission. I mean, it's already, as you described, works out that sometimes you actually are stuck with the, the vote didn't go with the majority, so you are actually making the decision. And my other reason was, it escaped me at the moment.
Okay.
Well, I think, yeah, because also among five people, sometimes you know something about somebody that other people don't know and that you can't possibly know. And I just think that within the city, the city council persons should have the bigger weight. That's all.
You can still always share your opinion with the mayor as well.
I was just going to say, yeah.
And every council member can share their opinion with the mayor without, and it's not a Brown Act violation, because it's nothing that's going to be-
It goes into one vote.
-voted on. And please correctly, if I'm wrong, but I believe my understanding would be that the council members could share their opinion with the mayor about who they, or share information about who they would like to support, but just my opinion.
Michelle?
As long as it's a one-way conversation and the mayor doesn't talk to everybody on the council, then, no, it's not a Brown Act violation, but certainly the mayor is able to glean information from a council member, but so long as there's no deliberation on that discussion and communication with another council member about what was discussed with, you know, council member A discussed it with B, so long as A doesn't then go to C and tell C what B told A.
Can I ask a question here?
I got it.
I can, I can break that down for you.
Yes, Councilmember, hang on. Councilmember DeGru?
You were talking about the city council, not the Council of Cities.
Correct. I'm just referring to this council right here.
Okay, because I was referring to, we were all sitting here in an open meeting, not one by one.
Right, no, that, there's absolutely no Brown Act violation there.
All right, I get you.
Yeah. I just want to remind everybody, when I first got on council, we didn't do this. So it's courtesy. It was something that was asked for, and I concur with it every time that we can possibly, possibly do it. But I don't know that it warranted probably this much discussion, because usually when it comes up, it's a sudden thing, and otherwise, we are happy to bring the candidates forward. And sometimes the candidates, if you recall, even come and speak to us. So I'm cool with it, whatever. It'll come back whenever we can. So I don't know what you want to do with that.
There's a motion and a second.
Do you repeat the motion and the second?
I'll try to repeat the motion. I believe it was that the council authorized the mayor to vote for Council of Cities appointments at their discretion. Does that sound right to you, Mayor Protem? Customarily, we would vote now.
Yeah, customarily, we would. I'm just puzzled about this whole discussion, because it already exists that way in how the committee was set up. Okay, but we're just reinforcing that? Okay, all right.
Well, it's not how it was.
It's a policy discussion. You could change this next year. You, you know, but, but this is, this is the-
This is how we in Pacifica want to view what the county has set up.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you want to go, the motion goes with what the county has set up?
Well, if I, if I might-
Yes, happily, 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 clarify for me.
If the council had been acting under the proposal put forward by Councilmember Stone, we would not have had this conversation tonight, because you would have already been designated, and the council would have been clear about what the policy is in terms of your ability to vote on their behalf. So that's really what I understand has been put on the table. If the council would like to move that way in the future, then vote in support of what Councilmember Stone has said. And if you'd like to continue having the conversations the way that you've been having tonight, then we'll be happy to bring this back to you for your weighing in when we can in terms of the dates.
I am totally fine having the conversations, but I want you to know that that's not new, because that is the way the Council of Cities, City Selection Committee is set up. And if there's a sudden vote, the mayor's the voting person. If there's a vote called on an issue that happens right at that meeting, the mayor is the person. Whenever we have advance notice on any of these positions, as a courtesy, we of course bring them back to the council.
And I believe what the difference is-
Okay, thank you.
Is that, if I understand, Councilmember Stone's motion is that there is no need to bring it back as a courtesy for the rest of the council.
Okay, that's what the, oh.
That's what I'm objecting to.
Is that right? Councilmember Stone?
That is correct. I just respectfully like to ask for a vote on the motion that I created, please.
Okay, I just, I didn't know what we were voting on, so it's probably a good idea.
I'm glad you got clarified, yes.
Okay, all right, then please vote. And that passes four to zero.
One.
Four to one.
Or four to one, sorry. Okay, with that said, I wish you all a good evening.